When I set these up, they instantly connect. And so I usually will turn them off.
Okay. Why is it blinking? Is it supposed to blink?
It took a second for it to.
Oh. No, they're all over in the other. I didn't want to leave them out here. Okay. I didn't want to leave them for.
I'd like to open this special meeting of Genoa Township Board of Trustees. Today's date is August 20th, 2025. The time is 6:30.
5:30.
5:30, sorry. Roll, please.
Ms. McBurry.
Here.
Mr. Antoinette.
Yes. With us this evening also is fiscal officer Patrick Myers, office manager Dina Brown, director of Rhodes and Parks, Lauren Pitts-Patrick, police chief Jim McMillan, and Paul Weiss, township administrator. Purpose of this meeting is to discuss the existing design of the playground in McNamara Park and possible additions to the project, possibly amending the 2025 appropriations, and approval of a change order for the playground project, and approval of a purchase order for the project. The board may also consider the annexation agreement with the state of Columbus with no changes. In light of trustee Vaughn arriving, we anticipate 15 minutes later, we're going to change the agenda and move to McNamara Park Playground Improvement Project.
Good evening, board. Got a few slides I can start out with tonight. I've been working with our partners at Midstates as well as some of our staff here. We have obviously taken into consideration everything that's either been phone called in, emailed in, social media and so forth from our residents and our park users. So I took the initiative to work with Midstates and get a couple of options on additions to our new playground that we have and already in progress. So one of the options that I received was a mound system like this. Pretty neat little system, but I got a lot of comments on, I'm worried about my toddler and being able to keep eyes on them. So my thoughts with this was this is going to add an additional site issue. So I like it, but that's the issue that I see with that. That's the other side of it. So you see it is pretty tall. It is, we're trying to target the two to five-year-olds with this addition. So we have big kids and little kids. And then we had another option come up. And this is a little more extensive. Dina, do you know how I get this, like, to go larger?
Go down to the bottom right. You can make it bigger down the bottom right. See the two hourglass for the back of my glasses?
Okay, so this is about the largest we're going to get on this. But this is, this is an overview. So these are all of the original structures from the first that is in progress now. These two would be added. Now, as we look over this, I want to address right away that we have a mound right here at this moment. It's got a dead tree on it and a small flowering tree that's struggling as well. That mound is going to come out, but the good news for everyone who enjoys the mound is there's a larger mound that's going to go back in just off to this side. So we will have a mound and we're adding a few trees. And with this project, we're only losing one shade tree out of the whole project, which is really good news. And obviously, we're going to add to that. So this structure that you see here is a climbing structure that will pretty much be for any age group. As the kids climb, you know, they stop when they reach their max height that they're comfortable with. But this is pretty common in the playgrounds now. This is our other new structure that we're proposing. It's black walnut, am I correct? James? Black walnut. It's made out of black walnut. Black locust? Okay, thank you. Here's this slide that wasn't shown very well on the website. And the slats are not this close together either in real life. It's much, much wider, but that's the two to five slide that's there. But here's this new structure that we're also proposing. Now you can see how large the climbing apparatus is back there. And there's a good photo of it as the addition. There's a pretty cool little plank. Can't really see, so this area right here is a little walk plank and it's got a rope system that they can hold on to as well. It's pretty neat. But this is the new proposed as well. So gives you an idea of what we're looking at to add to, to have our two to five-year-olds have a little more play quality as well at our McNamara Park. With the barn, just to address a couple of things, with this addition, this was a customized addition that I asked Midstates to add this large slide, which opens up this end of the barn, obviously lighting up and giving more visual inside. So that's going to help us quite a bit. And like Leslie showed online, these slats are nowhere close to this close together. It's much more gapped. So this play apparatus can pretty much be from two to 12 because they can go underneath as well. There's all kinds of stuff. One nice thing about the park with the original, we included lots of ADA accessibility, whether it be a wheelchair or another disability that our park users may have. We tried to reach out to them as well and give them a park they can enjoy as well. So that was a big goal for us. Do you two trustees have any questions for me or Midstates on any of these two new apparatuses or the mound that I showed?
Where are we on the cost of that addition?
It's going to be between $120,000 to $130,000 for the addition.
And it's just for that and the finger on the left?
Yep, and the surface. So when you get into the surface, that's where your cost really goes up is with your surface.
Expanding the surface?
Yes.
Provide for those.
Yep, so that additional turf is a large cost.
I've seen the, oh, go ahead.
No, you go.
No, I was just going to say, I've seen the woodscapes at other parks and they are really nice. And then the spider web-looking apparatus they have up at the Methodist Church in Sunbury and it's a pretty cool thing. So I've seen that too.
Here is our footprint over top of the original. Here's our original and this is the footprint over top. So you see this whole section obviously is going to be added, but we're much larger, much more play quality for the kids with our new design. And this will be the only shade tree that we're going to lose in the project.
Okay, is there a representative from Midstate?
Yeah, James and Eric are both here if we have any questions for them as well.
So just want to let the board know that the original structures have been ordered for some time. The township received a grant from the state for $150,000 to help offset the cost. And the other portions were paid split through the general fund and through the parks levy. So the total that we factored in, the original equipment with a contingency for any unforeseen problems on site or whatever, was budgeted at $680,000. So you can see we're dedicating a lot of money to the kids, but we want kids to be happy. So that along with the other portion, if the board chooses, will be a nice-sized project for our community.
Thanks, Paul. Midstate, anything you want to add?
I think if.
Okay.
We certainly can. I mean.
Like I spoke to James a little earlier, if we got, we have any questions from residents that I am not able to answer, that's, we can call on them and they can help us out with any answers that we can't give them.
Okay. I do want to, obviously, we've got some concerned residents, parents. I am going to open it up to some public comment. If anybody wants to come up and make comment or questions, we'll open it up. Sure.
Yeah, sorry.
All the old places are going to be turned off, I mean, cut down, right? Okay. So the new one, I do like the new things you've had since I saw on Facebook a couple days ago. Is there any way you can keep some of the old things incorporated here, like the jungle gym for the kids, the walking thing that they like to walk on and the big slide?
The issue that we have with the current playset is safety standards and regulations have changed over the years and it is quite old. So we are out of those safety regulations and safety standards with that. So that is one of the biggest reasons we pushed to replace the playground at this time.
Okay, because my grandkids, they're seven and eight. I did, the first format did, there's not like a lot of stuff for them to do. They love to do the jungle gym and the big slide and that kind of stuff. I didn't see a lot. To me, this is more of a smaller, more like three to five-year-old park, seven, maybe six or seven. But again, I haven't seen close-up of what you guys have added too. How, on the, what is it on the inside of the barn? Do you have a picture of the inside of the barn? Like playthings?
The current slide you guys have there, I believe, is no more than eight foot. And that big mighty descent slide that's on the outside of that is eight foot.
It's eight foot too? Okay, that's good.
So it's about the same height, but it's three to four foot at the top wide and then it's five foot at the bottom. So actually, kids can slide down it together at the same time. So it changes like a single user activity into a group activity.
What is that blue thing? Are these, are these like steps that go up there and there's a walkway and that kind of stuff?
Yep, there's all different kinds of climbers inside. There's like a fireman-type sliding pole. There's several activities. There's even, there's even a seek and find or something like that, that they find photos and stuff inside that they can play together on. So there's lots of stuff in the barn as well.
And actually with the addition that Lauren asked us to add with the mighty descent slide, because usually it's just a tomb slide that comes up into the barn, but it adds another climber up to that mighty descent slide that you don't actually have to go through the barn. So I see maybe congestion was one of the parents' concerns. And this actually adds another place to enter or exit. You can see on the picture there that there's a climber that takes right up to that slide.
There's also a climbing wall in this area to enter the barn right behind the slide. So there's several different climbers inside and out.
Okay, is that going to be like active turf or on the green? Is that going to be the new, won't get too hot for the kids and the parents?
Yeah, so that's going to be your accessible surfacing. So turf is very accessible compared to what you have now with loose rubber. I don't know if anybody in the room's ever tried to push a wheelchair through the loose rubber, but you can't do it at all. And so this is going to be fully accessible. The dome piece, actually, you can fit a wheelchair user under it. So as their friends are playing on top, they can also be having fun with their friends under it. And there's a play cube there that has sensory components in it as well. For kids that get overwhelmed quickly, they can kind of calm themselves down by being surrounded. And then there's also some sensory panels inside of that.
Okay. How big is the, how big is the dome? Is it like eight feet wide or 12 or 10?
The red dome.
Yeah, the red dome, the red dome.
I think it's six or five or six feet tall and it's probably 12, 11.
It's pretty big then? Fill the whole area? At the fountain, okay. Okay.
And then the play, the new play web is 16 feet tall.
Okay. That's pretty high. That's nice. That's pretty high.
Yeah. And then the spinner there also has two ADA seats, so somebody in a mobility device can also transfer into that and actually buckle in and then also play with their friends as they spin around. So I think accessibility and letting all the kids, no matter their ability to play together was a big thought process that Genoa went through with this project. So, and I mean, I think it's a lot more accessible than what you currently have with the rubber mulch.
Yeah, the rubber mulch is not, that's not a good thing with the tennis shoes. Okay. Just a quick question, are the swing sets kind of going away? Is that kind of like faded? Is that like old school? Because I know there's a lot of the parts don't have a lot of swing sets anymore.
I think it's a case-by-case basis, but I mean, swings are tried and true and I think everybody loves swings. We added a couple belts, a couple buckets, and then also some accessible seats. So again, I mean, the accessibility was on point here.
Is there enough room to add on in a few years if we find the need and we have the funds?
For more swings?
Or anything, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of open land out there, so you could always add another playground right next to this one. It will have concrete curves around it, which will deter nice and tight. But you know, you can also add outside of that in the future or whatever.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions?
I just wanted to say thanks for taking public input on this and being willing to reconsider some of the ideas. I didn't really have any concerns about the barn structure. I thought it looked fun. I thought it looked exciting. My big concern was that it was a little more compact than what we currently have out there. And at some of our community events, we get crowded. So I think that these potential new additions add to the surface area and will alleviate that problem. So I'm appreciative of people considering some changes. So, thanks.
We also used Midstates for the first time back behind Township Hall, so it's very good quality equipment. And I've received a lot of comments from parents that have taken their kids back there. They really enjoy that Midstates equipment.
All right, so I have a few notes I'm just going to run through them super quick. As far as the spider web, it's really cool. There's a lot of other parks in this area. More in Westerville, not so much Genoa, but very close to here that already have a spider web. So I'm not sure that's a super great addition if we're looking at being for our buck personally. The wooden climbing structure that you guys have added since recently, that's really cool. That's the type of thing that I'd love to see because it's a lot more open play, a lot more climbing. And kids of all ages, young to older, can play on something like that, which is awesome. I also have concerns about sightline with the barn. I know that you're saying that there's more slats and it's easy to see. We're talking accessibility, but if you're talking about parents that have kids with autism that like to run and they don't always stay where you need to be, it's very hard when you can't see them around a structure like that. So then you're really going to have to be a lot more hands-on in making sure that like they're not getting overtaken by older kids within the barn structure. They're not getting pushed around, they're not. It's hard to tell with these renderings. I don't know how high up some of the falls might be if there's like on the second structure of the barn. So that would be another concern because once again, somebody brought up the fact that when we have community events here, we get a lot of kids. So my other concern with the barn structure is, once again, volume and throughput and bottleneck of kids wanting to play. So adding a few structures, which you guys are considering, is kind of amazing because that will also help kind of spread out the play and not have everyone concentrated in that barn. But that's one thing to consider with the narrowness of the barn is kids kind of pushing each other a lot when there's just too many kids in one space. So that was one of the concerns. Also, kind of same thing there with the fireman sliding pole. I don't know if that's from a second floor of the barn or if that's like a small sliding pole. But one of the nicest things about McNamara Park that I found was my kids are getting a little older, but when they were younger, there are not a lot of parks for younger kids where there's areas that are dedicated that are a little more safe and shorter equipment. So the younger kids are going to want to be in that barn just as much as the older kids. And so it's just really looking at some of those heights and just being concerned about that. The seek and find, my daughter just told me, that's one of their favorite things at different parks. So the fact that there's going to be a seek and find, that's amazing. And then we're really going to be missing the monkey bars. I know that there's monkey, monkey bars are something that's been going away in a lot of places. There aren't a lot of parks that have them anymore. Whether it's monkey bars or even like they had the three-tier, the three different size at McNamara, single standing bars, those are great for physical activity for the kids. And it's a very like open-ended thing. So if you could do another three-tier, just the single bars, even that would be super amazing for the older kids. And then the older and the younger can kind of play together with something like that. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a few comments as well. Monkey bars, I was going to agree with that. And then also for the little kid structure, the open-ended with the wooden is awesome, but like my two-year-old's going to just kind of pat on them. Like if you could add something, I know you guys have so many comments coming at you. But like, like out here at this playground, you have the little slide and everything, climb on through. It's amazing. And then just a general comment, is there a way that the community can have more input when there are restructuring of these parks that we? when there are, um, restructuring of these parks that we can, so you can avoid something like this, that we can vote on? Like on Facebook, I get stuff from like Worthington and all other areas that are saying like, "Vote for this park, which one do you like?" And like, I just would love it for this as well, that we would be able to see these renderings and vote ahead of time and try to get ahead of what your community wants. So, that's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, anyone? Miss Bong, you got here a little too late for any questions.
Sorry, um, I guess I also am bringing up about the barn, just the inside being very closed in and I don't know about other moms, but I go to the park for a break and this is really a hands-on park for parents now. So, that was just my concern, that it's gonna be a lot of crawling through tunnels and slides, which is fun, but sometimes a park is good for a break.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, how's it going? Um, another thing about the barn, uh, I don't know if anyone's thought of this, I don't know if, if you've experienced it with, when you put it up other places, but, um, animals seems like are gonna, they see a structure, they're gonna try to use it, um, birds, wasps. Is there a plan for ma- the maintenance department to check that on a regular basis? Cuz, I mean, animals see a structure, they're gonna, they're gonna use, they're gonna use it. So, that might be something to think about. And, uh, like the previous commenter said, I'm, I'm pretty hands-off, but my son is a runner and if I can't see him and where he's at in the playground, I'm worried about what he's doing. So, I, I don't know if the slats can be, how wide they can be, but it, it would be nice to be able to see into the barn and see what they're doing, so. So, thanks.
Thank you.
And to, to address the, the bees and that type of thing, uh, I have an employee, um, from April till November, is seven days a week is checked and the months in between, it's five days a week, we check every day that we're here. So, I have a dedicated employee that checks all park restrooms, all, um, the equipment, the playgrounds, the trash cans, everything. It's, especially this time of year, there's a new wasp fest daily, everywhere. So, yeah, uh, I have an employee that's dedicated to that daily.
Thanks.
Yeah, we were, so I live fairly close to here as well, we were just there the other night and noticed there was wasps and Lauren got that taken care of like that within an hour. She had someone called and had, had them out and cleaned up and gone, so. But they were actually on the current structure that's there, so.
If I can have one more thing real quick as far as the barn structure and line of sight, if, I mean, it sounds like the barn's already locked in and there's not much you can do about that. In that instance, the only other thing that I could see that might help would be if they put like an L-shaped, um, open-ended fence, that would make it, so that way the parents could see when their kid kinda went on one side or the other, that make sure that they can't run past the sightline of the bar, of the barn.
That makes sense, Lauren.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, I'll, I'll just come up and, I'll just go.
Can you get the overview?
Yeah, so, if you got.
See if I got an overview, there you go.
Yeah, so, parking lot is.
The par- the parking lot's right here.
Parking lot's right here, yeah, so if the barn's right here, so you kind of had like an L shape like this, right? The problem is that's the entrance way, so that makes it really challenging. But if there was an L shape like this, when kids are going into the barn, they can't get this way or go that way, you'd see them coming out this way before they went into the, it's not so much, we can watch our kids run, there's not a big enough space, you can watch them not run to the, to the, to the parking lot. The problem is, if you've got a kid that elopes or runs, they take advantage of any sightline where you cannot see them and they know this and they will, they will just beeline out of your sightline and you're like, "Hey, I haven't seen him come around that corner for a minute" and you look and they're like halfway across the park and that's really dangerous.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to, you know, kind of add on to what somebody else said is the, the monkey bar situation. I mean, you know, as my son has grown up at McNamara Park, um, he is really enjoying the monkey bars and climbing on the single pole things and so, I know the dome is great, you know, and it's wide and everything like that, but it doesn't give them the sense to, you know, swing on the monkey bars and everything like that that we have currently. So, I wish that's something, we could incorporate that somehow.
Thank you.
Well, we've had a few comments about the monkey bars, can you address that again?
So, monkey bars, w- we're trying to kind of, um, theme each park. So, we do have a monkey bar set, um, that was install, installed in the new Ninja course recently. So, that's our most recent monkey bar set. And we just didn't plan a monkey, monkey bar set for this, for this layout, so.
What's the cost?
Oh, the monkey bar set?
Yeah.
I've. I, I wouldn't have a clue, do you guys have any clue what a monkey bar set would? I mean, there's so many different options that.
Yeah, it gets really tricky, right, when you talk about trying to add something to an existing thing when you're dealing with a surface that's not meant to be taken out. Surfacing goes in last, but to answer your question about monkey bar, ten thousand to twenty thousand, depending on what it is and what type of monkey bar are you adding.
Surface cost on top of that, which.
I was kind of including that, but.
Kind of, okay.
Ish, you know?
What's the surface cost? Say, does it green, that, that carpet, green carpet?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what you're getting, right, and the square footage, but typically it's twenty-five or thirty bucks a square foot.
Is there room there now at the permanent?
There is not.
To add a monkey bar?
There is not.
And on the, on the map, it looks like there is, but yeah.
Lauren, if you go back to the 2D, can you help?
And how much is the spider web thing?
Spider web thing is roughly by itself twenty-five thousand dollars.
I feel like, I mean, other parents can chime in as well, but I feel like monkey bars would give a lot more use of the spider web. If you ever go to parks that do have the spider webs, kids will go on it for like five minutes and then they've done it and they're fine and they're done, but monkey bars, they'll go over and over and over because it takes special skills to do the monkey bars. It's a lot harder for kids to do monkey bars than it is to do climbing up and down on that and they have to like train that skill. So, I feel like they get a lot more out of that.
Set we had now, which is gorgeous because it had the different tiers for the kids to learn and you can hold them up and, which is, it was just perfect for the, for the older ones, if you want some on the bar.
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have something like that, or similar to what we have?
It's like a three-tiered pull-up bar basically, like for sure.
No, yeah. Okay. Yeah, we certainly have stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we absolutely have stuff like that.
Yes, from my understanding too, so I know we said that you're getting rid of the structures because they don't meet current safety regulation or safety standards. Is that something that, uh, it's just not, uh, you, it has to be scrapped? Or is that something it's grandfathered into? Or is that, um, I, I guess I'm trying to understand, is that like a liability issue for township? Because it is twenty years old, like why, just because it's not meeting current standards, why aren't you grandfathered in with it?
I, I think the current condition is the, the, there, it's probably around twenty-three to twenty-four years old, the equipment. And I, there's nothing in my house beside the structure that's twenty-four years old. Everything has had to be replaced. So, it's the same way with playground equipment, it's harder to find parts and materials to replace these things if something breaks, so.
Everything's starting to gap, there's certain gaps that you have to stay, they have to be so close together.
That's what I'm trying to say.
So, yeah, so, you know, kids don't get snagged or a foot go down and so as the structure gets older and things settle more and more, we start to get those gaps and things like that that, that can't be fixed.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously you've seen all those plastic pieces that are going around the, uh, rubberized mulch, for lack of a better word. All those are kind of given out, but as far as the green structure, I don't really, we were just over at it the other day and I couldn't really tell anything that was really wrong with it, but again, like you said, it is twenty-three years and I, I just am trying to understand just what is the normal life cycle with that versus what's, what are the main concerns with it?
So, playgrounds are typically replaced around twenty years.
Okay.
So, it depends on what type of usage, where it's at, how well it's maintained. And, you know, just to further explain, Paul is saying, Lauren, you know, when something gets twenty years old, I think like things start to break down. So, like you start throwing money at it.
Yeah.
It becomes, replacement parts are more expensive and, so it just adds up and it's like a. Yeah, like you said about the border, it's breaking down, like it just, you start to really nip and dime yourself, so. About this time is a very typical time to, to replace a playground, for sure. The comments about the monkey bars, so I'm, I'm a resident here, so I have kids who can walk this playground regularly, walk this playground as much as my kids are a little bit older, they're six, nine and ten, yeah. So, my experience with playgrounds, monkey, like, I had two broken on my family board. Number one, and he wasn't old enough. So, kids that are two to five don't have proper archery strength to be playing on monkey bars. He was five, so I guess he's still, he was in there, but nonetheless, he broke his arm on monkey bars. But what I've found with the, the large neck structures is you can get, there are kids on there and you can swing, you can hang, you can climb and you can traverse. Being on the, the neck structures, like it forces you to pay attention to all your extremities and use them all at once to traverse the side. So, monkey bars are, I'm not saying I don't like them, but it's not, you landed here for a number of reasons. Monkey bars are kind of, a little bit of one-dimensional.
And to, to the point of the monkey bars also being at Freeman Park already, I, I understand that, so if not monkey bars, then maybe the, the three-tiered single bars, so at least kids can practice the, uh, at the different heights.
We can add it all here.
I'm down for it. Like, if, if, it, it would be interesting to see like if, if that is an option that would be able to take up a lot less space than a full monkey bar set, just have a three-tiered or even a two-tiered.
Sure.
Or even a one-tiered.
Or, or the ones where they do with the, the two parallel bars, where the kids can do like random parallel bar tricks.
Sure.
Something like that. A- anything else where at least there's one bar structure that, that the older kids can enjoy as well?
I think there was a lot of great comments.
Yeah.
Really great encouraging to hear and I'm glad people have thoughts and opinions about this. You know, one of the things we could do about the barn, if that's something we wanted to do, an easy fix is to rotate the layout. So, if we wanted to put the barn just towards the back, that's something we can do, you know?
Yeah, that's actually, I think that's.
We could certainly.
Yeah, right now.
Yeah, right now, if it's next to the park, I didn't feel like that, with the parking lot, right? That's really not. Yeah, I could, uh, if you moved it to the corner where the swings currently are, I feel like that one doesn't have, like, there's nowhere to run, you'd just be running to the trail.
Or to the woods.
Right, or to the woods, and there's nothing like exciting with it, right?
Sure.
So, as opposed to if you put it, 'cause that's the thing with kids that run, they typically are running because either one, they're trying to escape the stimulus or two, they're running because they see something else that's more interesting. So, the, the challenge that we have, even with the current park, is where if the kid wants to run to the, the, the facility, right?
The shelter house.
Shelter house, right? They wanna run to the shelter house, well, if that barn is positioned in a way that they can run there easily, the line of sight definitely comes to the issue. So, if it's on the far side where the current swings are, there's nowhere for them to run to and by the time they run anywhere, you're gonna see them running from the middle of the field and then it's not like they're running to hit it in the corners.
Is the barn four, four-sided or three?
Three would be amazing.
Could you do, one side like it, windows, cut more windows in the area? So, that's, here's, here's what you're seeing inside of it more.
I think you're gonna be very surprised on how much you can see through it because these are the old 3D images of the barn and the new images of the barn actually showed opened up a lot more, like you can, they took a lot of slots, slats off the side of the barn, so if you follow the company's create play, so.
We'll, we'll get these pictures.
I was gonna say, could you get those and put it on?
Yeah, we could share them on the barn and then they could share them too.
That's much better, yeah.
Yeah.
I believe Leslie shared those on Facebook.
But really, I love the idea of orientating in a different location would probably solve a lot of sightless questions.
And one thing to your grandfathered-in question is, as, as they make more regulations and more standards for playground safety, there's no grandfathered-in for playground safety rules.
Well, you're saying, like, I grew up around here too, so like I took him to Hop Woods two weeks ago and so compared, seeing it now versus what it was when I was a kid, I'm like, for lack of a better term, it was just super nerve-wracking. Like, this is, this isn't even a bad environment.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. Right.
Like if I were his age, like.
Yeah.
So, it's, you have those, like, you're looking at like, are we doing it, like, is this kinda doing the same thing? You have those concerns, like, are we, are we over padding everything where it's like, you're not really charging the climate, just doing crazy things? So.
I am totally with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to design to meet standards.
Yeah.
And it's liability on the townships or the schools or whoever. But if you look at the 2D, so why I wanted her to bring this up is because I, I heard some people say there's a lot of room to add things. If you see the dotted lines around all the equipment, those are the actual use zones stipulated by playground safety standards with each piece of equipment. So, we tried to take as much equipment as we can and shove it in as tightly as we can, um, just for the simple fact of saving money for surfacing. Um, the last thing we wanna do is, is charge more money and spread everything out even further and have to put more surfacing in between everything. So, we try to fit everything as tightly as possible.
I will say when we're on a positive note, we love that you're gonna put a new mountain in if you're taking your old mountain because for, for my kids, they love that, that little hill. I mean, it's just a mountain, it's perfect, challenges, it's, it's great.
All right, any more comments?
Is there, is there any more benches around the playground?
So, there'll be three additional and they, we have three currently there and a picnic table that will be moved around but still there. So, they'll, we'll go from three benches to six and a picnic table.
Okay. All great input, certainly appreciate, even the, uh, the emails and comments we got on Facebook are all very helpful. Uh, keep in mind, we, we, we need to be financially responsible. We have a certain budget that we're spending. Uh, certainly, things can be added in future as this thing grows. Uh, also, please keep in mind that ADA access was a big factor in this layout and design and decision on equipment. So, I hope that your kids will all enjoy it and, um, Lauren, any other comments?
I have a comment. Um, I would just wanna address one of the questions, can the community have input in the future? We do have a Parks Committee, they come up with this design, they do a lot of research, they work very hard. You're welcome to attend any of those meetings. This design was created in twenty-twenty, or twenty-twenty-two. Um, it was kinda put on hold for a little while due to budget, it was scaled down because of money. Um, but they're currently working on center green design, so if you wanna be part of that or have any input, I encourage you to attend the Parks Committee meetings, that is your time to have input.
Uh. The first Wednesday of the month, um, we have, uh, six a year. So, we have more in the summertime than we do in the wintertime, so November, December, January, we don't have meetings.
Thank you, Lauren.
And those are always posted, um, on the website.
I think it's also important to know that we spent a significant amount of time investigating and researching grant options. Uh, I think trustee Yvonne spent a significant amount of time with Mr. Wise on, uh, teaming up with, um, the Blue Jackets. Uh, unfortunately, their equipment, we didn't feel like was appropriate for this age group, so that wasn't an option and it was heavily geared towards the Blue Jackets and may not be adamant fans, but. So, anyway, we, we, we have spent a lot of time researching, investigating this, working with Midstate on this layout and I, I hope you appreciate it, we're, tonight, we're, all we're doing is authorizing the additional equipment. Uh, the rest of it's already been appropriated. Um, and the other reason why we're, we're, have this schedule is to get this equipment in before winter, right? All right, any other comments or concerns before we move forward? Okay, so, um, do I need to approve the Permanent Appropriation Amendment first?
Yes. Yeah, if you're planning addition, additional like the, the, what do you call that?
Monkey bars.
Then you need to add some to that figure.
Then you need to add some to that figure, so.
150?
I heard the figure of 25,000 probably cover that with the grass, with the surface below it.
So, we're.
The permanent appropriation that we're doing from the Parks Fund, the capital outlay from 1, 275 to 400, has to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, and then.
But Paul's saying plus 25,000.
You should probably add more to 400, if you're gonna throw on another 25.
Oh, I didn't know you guys were gonna.
We're gonna.
I thought they wouldn't fit.
If you're in favor of the monkey bar change.
I thought they wouldn't fit, if they didn't fit something.
I think, I think they can, I think, there's work around.
It would have to be bigger than what it's shown.
Well, all right.
So appropriating another 25,000 will cover that?
Yes, we can find something, yes.
All right, so that 400 becomes 425?
Yes.
All right. So I move to approve the following permanent appropriation amendment, Park Fund capital outlay increased from 275,000 to 425,000, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, non-roll.
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Antonet?
Yes, motion passed. So the change order now will be 155.
Correct.
I move to approve a change order and authorize the fiscal office to issue a purchase order with Midstate Recreation in the amount of an estimated 155,000 dollars per state-term scheduled pricing for the additions to the McNamara Park Playground Improvement Project, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, none?
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Antonet?
Motion passed. Closes the issue on the park, you're free to stick around, we have one more item on the agenda and we'll be done.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you guys for coming.
We appreciate your input.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the annexation agreement with the City of Columbus. We had a lengthy discussion last meeting with pretty positive public input with, get with the City of Columbus and our legal counsel. We had continued the hearing to allow for some revisions, which we effectively didn't, felt wasn't necessary. So having said that, I would move to approve the annexation agreement with the City of Columbus as presented, do I have a second?
Second. Can you tell me why we don't need the proposed changes, what was the feedback?
So, there was, I don't have it in front of me, but there was language in there about the City of Columbus's ability to provide utilities.
Right.
But the language clarified that it was only within the City of Columbus annexation area and nothing outside of it. So we felt like it was clear enough that it didn't raise a concern.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Any other discussion? Roll.
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Antonet?
Yes, motion passed. No more business, we come before the board, I move to adjourn this meeting at 6:15 PM, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.